Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We call this meeting to order. Welcome to Burlington City Council Meeting Number Five, March 5th, 2012, 6:30 in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Kathleen.
McCambell.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Tonight, we are beginning with our new camera system and our sound system, and we have a projector system up and running, but it's not all coordinated yet. We're making progress, we hope, so you at home bear with us, and also here, we're trying to keep things coordinated, but we can't guarantee it just yet. So, we're working on it. How's the volume? Is it okay? Rich, are we okay with that? Okay. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will remove from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, and wine cigarette license, reports and bonds. We have three resolutions. One is awarding the contract for 2012 Crystal Drive reconstruction. Number two, resolution approving amendment to the agreement with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure. The third is a resolution approving application of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to seek land and water conservation, fund financial assistance for Perkins Park Shelter project. We're setting the date for two public hearings, one on March 19th for consideration and plans for specs of the 2012 Cascade Water Shed Sewer Separation Project Phase One, and one on April 16th for consideration of the annual consolidated transit funding application. We have one appointment.
Yes, Your Honor, we have appointment for the Library Board of Trustees, Jennifer Cleaver Kirkman.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I'd like to have item number three under the resolutions regarding the natural park resources removed from consent agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, do you have any that you'd like to approve?
No.
I'll entertain a motion, then.
I move that we approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda except Item Three.
Thank you.
Second that.
We have a motion to second. Okay, Kathleen.
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
This is the time set aside for hearing for consideration of plans and specs for the 2012 HMA resurfacing project, and you want to lead that off, or do we go right to...
Go right to our public Works Director, Ron Canoke.
Thank you, Dan. Can you hear me? Don't shake your head at me. It's not up there.
The system will work correctly. You'll be able to see it on the screen up there, and hopefully at home, you'll be able to see it. Maybe if you turn off that middle light switch, that would help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This project will include improvements to approximately 32 blocks of city streets, and I'll just give you a general idea where most of them are, and then I'll put a list up there, because I know you can't read these street names. But the northeastern part of town, we've got a few blocks of Sycamore, Linden, Iowa, and then a couple blocks of North Sixth Street. We're including Lebrick Street from Division down to West Avenue, about two and a half blocks of Gunnison south of Division Street, several blocks of Third Street between South Street and Division Street, a couple blocks of South Fifteenth, and a couple blocks of And that gives you a little better list of them, I believe. The actual improvements will consist of removal of the old asphalt, where there is old asphalt. We'll be cleaning and repairing the underlying pavement. We'll be doing some spot curb repair, replacing or adjusting fixtures and putting on two and a half inches of new hot mix asphalt, and then where necessary, we'll be constructing ADA accessible handicap ramps. The budget available for this project is $1,113,000, and we're estimating, the engineers estimate at this time, is $1,070,000. At the work session, I indicated that part of this project would be funded through general obligation bonds and part of it through local option sales tax. This afternoon, Stephanie set me straight on that. The whole project is funded through geo-bonding. With your approval tonight, we'll accept bids on April 4th and come back to you on April 16th for a recommendation to award, with the project being completed this summer. I would answer any questions.
Audience, do you have any questions for Ron?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I was just wondering what percentage of the total city streets for the city of Burlington does this project represent, and what is the expected life for this project?
I'm not sure that I can answer the first question about the percentage of the total street system. We have about 165 miles of streets. I really don't know what the mileage on this is. We use the block because it's kind of something everyone can get their mind around, but I don't really have the length of it. I would say it's probably a couple miles, maybe two miles out of the 165. As far as the life expectancy, by the book, you expect with this type of a resurfacing project a 20-year street. In reality, if we take care of them and if we stay on them and we keep the cracks sealed, we can get 25, sometimes 30, out of them.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions?
Stan Strad, 2009 Shamrock Drive. The resurfacing budget, is it Crystal Drive in there also, the replacement at almost $4,500, $450,000? Where's that money coming from?
The Crystal Drive, we are reconstructing with the concrete street. I think the high or the low bid on it was $205,000 or $6,000.
Well, that's good, but that's not part of this money's.
No, that's not part of the same dollars. Yeah, sales tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, and that's going to be, that's already in the budget for this year, this is going to be next year's?
No, it's in the budget for this year. In fact, we've taken bids on it, and it's on tonight's agenda. It was on the consent agenda for award tonight.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Counsel, do you have any questions for Ron or comments?
Just one, Ron. I know this question gets asked every time we bring this up for the HMA. What is the criteria for grading these streets, and do we have a criteria? Because that's always the question I get within the public, why are we doing one street over another? If you could answer that.
The criteria for not grading, as in motor grading, but as in rating.
Rating, yes.
We look at them, and we look at, we look at pretty much every street in the city, every paved street in the city every year, and we rate them like from a, on a condition standpoint, and then when we get, we probably take about, I'd say, three years' worth of the worst ones, and we kind of look at them as a group, and if you'll notice on the map, we can't just, you know, maybe only one block of this would have been this year, and this block would have been next year or something. We just try to, we group them together, because if we jump around and do a block here and a block there all over town, we drive the price up. So, you can probably find a block or two on these that are not as bad as someplace else in town, but we just look at the condition of the street, how much maintenance the street department has, how much effort the street department has to put in in maintenance on it, the grouping and trying to keep them close together, and then also, in a lot of cases, we look at the amount of traffic on it, where sometimes a dead end or a cul-de-sac gets, has to wait a couple extra years, just because the number of people are not affected are not as high.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel? Hearing done, we have a motion.
I move that we close.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to close a public hearing, and a second. Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specs for the 2012 HMA resurfacing project.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
A second for Chris. Any discussion?
No.
Before we move on. Okay, Kathleen.
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Now, this is the time set aside for hearing for consolidation, consideration, excuse me, the sale of property locally known as 408 South Gunnison, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Go right to Eric.
Back to Eric.
Quick map here. This is, property was acquired by the city of Burlington through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, that's a grant program through the state, to acquire abandoned and foreclosed homes. It was rehabbed by the city and now looking to sell it. Did have an offer from Hope Haven to purchase the property, and they would use it to rent to individuals that are income-qualified. The purchase price for the properties has to be at the appraised value, and then that money goes back into the NSP program to acquire, rehab, or demolish other homes that are in need of that. So, we are bringing this forward to the council. It does have to meet income requirements and neighborhood stabilization program requirements, so there's approval process through the state before they can even make an offer on the home as well. So, they do meet those requirements, so we would recommend to sell to Hope Haven for this home.
And I notice also it has to have a zoning board approval.
Yeah, for Hope Haven, it's assisted living for their individuals, depending on the individual that lives there, they would have to get a special use permit for that as well, which they have in a few other locations throughout Burlington, so.
Okay. Any questions, Eric? Counsel? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment concerning this issue?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I just had one question, looking through the paperwork. It looked like there was a real estate agent involved in this transaction. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we sold the homes through a real estate agent.
I was just wondering, any other property that's been sold through the city has just been sold directly, and I was just wondering why that was done that way and why we're incurring that additional cost when we never have before. I was just curious about that.
I don't think we, that's not a true statement, Eric. I don't think it's, that we've never, ever done that before. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, we've used real estate agent before in other homes.
I just haven't seen them.
Anyone else have a comment? Counsel, you have any questions or comments? Okay, Becky.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
So, we have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 408 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is carried. This is the time set aside for a hearing for consideration of the sale of property locally noted as 1613 Lincoln Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. Back to Eric.
Back to Eric.
This was another home that the city acquired and rehabbed and has been on the market for nearly two years now. But again, with the NSP program, there are some pretty strict income requirements. I believe for this home, it's 50% of the average median income for Des Moines County, which means an individual with very low income has to qualify for a 30-year fixed loan and be able to get that through a local bank. So, there are some income restrictions that make it difficult to sell, and it's why this home has been for sale for so long. But we have had an individual that has been qualified through a bank, Ryan Bradley, and made an offer to purchase his home, which we would recommend approval of.
And there is some requirement about matching for this program also?
Yeah, again, we cannot sell it for any more than it's appraised for, but we can give money through the NSP program for down payment assistance to ensure that they qualify for a loan and pay some closing costs, which allows them to actually qualify for the loans.
Okay, great. It's a good program, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah. Counsel, you have questions, Eric?
No. This has been on the market for, yeah, well, maybe not that long. I was going to say a couple.
Anyone from the audience have comments concerning this item?
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second.
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1613 Lincoln Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Second that.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? It's a good program. Okay, good. Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Another public hearing. This is the time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance rezoning of properties locally known as 2270 and 2280 Florence Avenue to include a planned unit development, the Masters PUD overlay zone, as allowed by Section 17.20.40 of Title 17 of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Yeah, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for consideration of an ordinance rezoning the properties locally known as 2270 and 2280 Florence Avenue to include a planned unit development. The Masters PUD overlay zone is allowed by Section 17.20.40 of Title 17 of the Burlington Municipal Code for March 19, 2012 City Council Meeting.
That's second that.
We have a motion and a second, and Eric, do you want to briefly comment why we would do that?
The developer that is requesting this zoning change due to personal reasons wasn't able to make it tonight, and we'd like to have the actual applicant here to be able to speak on SB path before voting on this.
Okay. Is that motion debatable or discussable?
You can discuss it.
Okay. Counsel, any objections?
No.
Okay. Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
So, that public hearing will be continued to our next council meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. Okay. Next, we have another public hearing. This time is set for a hearing for consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement between the City of Burlington and the Capitol Theater Foundation for encroachment into North Third Street right-of-way for the building at 27, or 207-209-211 North Third Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Yeah, this is just a handicap accessible ramp, and I think Eric's got the details on that for you.
The Capitol Theater was previously approved for a different configuration to a ramp into the building, and they've come back with a modification to that. It includes an access directly from the street on the south with a ramp adjacent to the curb up to the sidewalk in front of the building to allow access into the building without any stairs. This also includes some stairs adjacent to the curb based on the height of the sidewalk at the, and the street level there, so with that, if there's any other questions.
Counsel, you have a question, Eric?
No.
Anyone in the audience have a question or comment concerning this issue?
The only comment I have is that I would refrain from voting on this, as I feel I have a conflict of interest in being on the board of the Capitol Theater.
Okay. Fair enough. Stan?
Stan Strad, 2009 Shamrock Drive. Who's paying for this?
Capitol Theater.
Capitol Theater. Okay.
Our most devoted foundation. Is that be correct? Yes.
Since Stan isn't paying for this, I make a motion to close.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Motion and a second to close the hearing.
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson?
Epstein.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving a permanent encroachment agreement between the City of Burlington and the Capitol Theater Foundation for encroachment into North Third Street right-of-way for the Burlington at 207-209, comma, 211 North Third Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve.
McCambell.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Epstein.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Eric. Now, this is the time set for here, considering, hearing consideration of the fiscal year budget 2012, 2013, and publications made in the Hawkeye, for those of you who have seen that, it gives you the summary. Stephanie Stooker is here for more details.
Okay, we'll just start with my slide. This year, the budget proposed expenditures are approximately $52,800. That's an increase of approximately $508,000 or 11% compared to last year's budget. And here, I've just broken down the expenditures. You can see fiscal year 2013 and fiscal year 2012 by the program. Most programs, you see slight increases. Most of those are caused by operating costs increasing, personnel costs increasing. The largest increase you'll see is the capital projects. And the next slide details exactly the larger amounts that are budgeted in our capital projects I don't think any of these capital projects are new to anybody who's been following what we need to do to move forward with the Cascade Sewer Separation. The bridge is budgeted at $4 million. The animal shelter, that's the full amount that's budgeted for construction, which the city has only approved to pay for half of that. So, that's what's in our capital projects fund. Right now, the budget is proposed to have a property tax rate increase of .0381 cents. And here, I've just listed a history of our property tax rate. As you can see, we didn't have an increase in fiscal year 12. We did have one in 2011 of nine cents. 2010, we had no increase. '09, we had a nickel decrease, and then '08, we had an increase of almost nine cents also. And I just did a quick calculation of what this increase means on a property that's, has an assessed taxable value of $100,000. You calculate the rollback, and you can see in the fiscal year 2012, the tax rate would have been $728.88. In this proposed increase, the new taxes they would pay would be $764.16, increase of $35.28. Then here are just some of the factors that are affecting the budget. We did have increases in our valuations, both in TIF and the regular valuations of approximately 5%. So, you can see our property taxes that we're collecting are going to go up approximately a half a million dollars, which helped us. And then here's just listing the rollback. The residential rollback increased to 50%, .75 this year, and then commercial is just We are budgeted to have increased fees in our solid waste fund. It's proposed that it's going to go up .65 in the monthly fee, and this is caused by the increase in the landfill tipping fees and the recycling charges. So, we need to pass those increases on to the consumer. And in the sewer fund, it's proposed for a 9% increase, again, caused by operating costs, and then the anticipation for the future debt service requirements to comply with the EPA sewer separation requirements. And then on this slide, I was just showing you, we do have $660,000 budgeted for our hotel motel tax revenue. That is an increase from the prior year of about $60,000. We do have it in the budget to create a resolution that we will split this amount up to $600,000, 50/50 with the convention and Visitors Bureau, and then anything over and above the $600,000, the city will get to keep 65% of those dollars, and then it will pass on 35% to the convention and Visitors Bureau. On this slide, it's just showing some of the projects that gets paid out of the hotel motel tax. Some of the things are, you know, ongoing. We're still, the $5,000 for Snake Alley Landscaping, that was the same amount as last year. We're still contributing to the Renewable Energy Committee. We're going to get some new chairs at the auditorium. We're going to re-face, resurface the General Course statue, community field, that helps with paying the utilities, replacement of golf course equipment, and then the recplex, those are to help out with some of the operating costs, and then $50,000 will go to property tax relief. And our sales tax fund, we have budgeted 4.1 million revenues this year, which is up about $500,000 also from fiscal year 2012. And of that amount, 50% will go to property tax relief, and then we've, you know, have police officers that we, that will help keeping them employed, replacing some squad cars. We brought back the housing demolition program this year to help, to be paid by the sales tax. And then we always set aside 5% for economic development, and the community field allocation that will help pay for the debt that we took on last year for community field. We do equipment, computer equipment replacement, and then the streets program gets paid out of sales tax. If anybody has any question?
Counsel, let's hold off until the public has any questions, if that's okay with you all. Okay? Anyone from the audience have comments or questions at this time?
Stan Strad, 2009 Shamrock Drive. You had $4 million for Cascade Bridge, you kind of went over that. There's money allocated, $4 million, to redo Cascade Bridge? What am I missing?
Well, it's in the capital projects, but doesn't mean it's been funded. It's listed there, but it doesn't, we haven't approved that it be done yet. In other words...
Then other things already been approved, except for that, then, huh?
Not everything, but because it's on our capital improvement list, that's why it's listed there.
Those are still things we still got to get done.
Community field, we give them the lights, and now we're going to give them another $50,000. What's that?
Well, you give them isn't the right word.
Donate? That'd be proper.
It's all semantics. It's all semantics.
Yeah. Do we need that light back on, by the way, Rich? I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. The first part was for the utilities. The second part, as Stephanie said, was to pay for the bond issue that was floated to pay off their debt that they were having trouble...
That's a $700,000 we gave, or donated into our field.
Yeah.
Why would that show up there? I mean, you bonded for that, and you're making payments towards that bond. Wouldn't that already be taken care of? Why would that show up again?
Because that's where the money's coming from.
For the payments.
For the payments.
Okay. I don't understand. Kind of dumb, that's why I ask. Another thing, you know, these, these projects, I mean, I'm all for it. Another thing, you know, these, these projects, I mean, I'm all for it. We want to have a good community. But, you know, we just can't support everybody's fun. You like baseball, they should participate enough and get enough people behind it to pay for it. Recplex is the same way. The golf course is the same way. You know, we've got to run it as a business. I think we just dove out that money, and I just don't see any sense in it. We've got to cut costs somewhere. I'm on Social Security, my costs go up every time. My payroll doesn't. So, every time you guys give away money, you're taking away money.
I understand.
Now, as the barrel gets closer and closer to the bottom, you're going to keep giving away. Where am I going to go?
Now, I'm not going to disagree with you, Stan, because I do agree with you. But when we look at the Recplex, we also have to look at how much that brings into the community within the hotel motel tax. I think every single weekend from June till July, there's a major tournament going on out there. And I think it's June 22nd through 23rd, and I think maybe even the 24th, there's a 35-team soccer tournament that will be, every hotel room in the area is booked. And so, by supporting them, they're supporting the community and bringing monies into the hotel motel tax.
And so, you know, sometimes you have to spend a little to make a little, and that's what
we're doing right there.
Well, they weren't, they weren't too bad there. But what about the ballpark? You think they're bringing in big people to spend the nights here? No motels?
Sometimes, Stan, I just want to say this too. Sometimes, we're going to make decisions, or I know I will, or make a vote that it's not about, it's not about the money. I mean, to me, sometimes it's just about, it comes down to keeping something going, keeping a, a service going. So, I mean, to keep a service going, sometimes that does, that does cost a little extra money. But I mean, it's, you know, what do you, what do you do? I mean, you, you cut costs, and then you have to give up some type of service. So, I mean, it's just trying to find that. And, and again, I hear you. I hear you, brother. But it's finding that happy, that happy medium, and that's the, you know, that's the issue. But something is lost. You know what I'm saying? I mean...
My money? That's what's lost.
Mine, too. You know what I'm saying? You know?
You on Social Security?
I don't even have a wallet. There you go, I lost her already.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess I want to say, yes, it would be nice if they were run like a business and they could balance out. But also, I think that the city is run like a city, like a business, and there are, you know, what they're trying to say, there are things that cost in one way where we hope to bring in money in another way because of that expense. And so, that is like thinking like a business, too, that you have to spend money on certain things to bring in. And that's true. I think that they can show a correlation between the Recplex and the hotel motel tax, if you look back in time, that there has been an increase because of all the activity.
There has been in years past, which you're splitting 50/50 with tourism. But how many motels do you think we have to fill up to pay for that? Plus, if we get $150,000 split of that, $300,000 between what we're giving the ballpark, the Recplex, the golf course, we've already blown ours. Another thing, do you think they're going to be that busy this year if gas goes up to $5 a gallon?
Actually, they're, they're already booked.
Yeah. They're already booked. They're already booked.
These tournaments...
So, they're locked in, you've got the money, they can't back out.
They, they, they book these tournaments a year in advance, and even more so than that. So, that's one thing nice about the Recplex, that they broke out, you know, a year ahead of time. Because Burlington's no different than a lot of cities that have a facility like the Recplex. We, we go after these big tournaments to bring in, so...
So, what we're saying, then, the Recplex is really bringing the motel money into Burlington.
And I think that hotel motels would question, why are we paying this tax? And we would say, well, we're using part of that tax to help your business, too, to bring business in. So, it's kind of a circle there, you know? But it would be nice if, you know, that these places would cash flow, but it's also part of the bigger picture of how you run a city, you know, as a business.
Yeah, but when you look traditionally, the monies we give to those people, complexes or whatever, it's about the same. So, things really aren't getting any better, are they?
Well, what do you mean, they're about the same?
Well, the ballpark lights, the Recplex, the golf course, about the same as last year.
Yeah, but that, that's not using up all of our hotel motel tax. That's not what you're trying to say, is it?
No, I'm saying it's using up a big portion of it. Big portion of it, $150,000, then you're splitting 65/35. It's using up a huge portion of it.
Okay. Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
Anyone else from the audience having comments? Mr. Shahan?
Leon Shahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. And I'd kind of like to address first what Stan was talking about that's irritating to me, irritating to him. When we talk about the, and this is just the beginning, but for instance, when you're talking about the hotel motel tax, another friend of mine has a description of that. He, he calls those rubber band dollars. We talk about how all this, the Recplex brings these hotel motel tax dollars to the city. Well, those go right back out to somebody else, even though 50 percent of the, those dollars can be used to reduce my property taxes. That's what Stan was trying to say, and that's what I've been saying for years. Now, what I'd like to do is go into my list. I don't have the best preparation here. I had a family emergency, and this isn't my day job, despite what some people think. We talk about essential services in this community. To me, the Chamber of Commerce is not an essential service. The casino and the rest of Randy's complex on Highway 61 is not an essential service. Yet, we're spending millions upon millions of dollars.
Wait, wait a minute.
Let, let me go through with this. I've, I've got a list.
Where in the budget does it say we're giving money to the casino?
Okay, I can give it to you.
Good, I want to see that.
The Convention and Tourism Bureau gets $325,000 ballpark. As far as I'm concerned, as a taxpayer, that's taxpayer-funded advertising department for the casino. You look at their ads, you may disagree.
I do. You're not, you're not right on this.
I, I, I have the floor now, okay? I have the floor on this.
Okay, you go for it. But I just have to correct you, because that is not correct.
Well, that's your opinion. That's your opinion. We, we also are spending, subsidizing an interest-free loan for the casino complex out there that's coming out of the hotel motel tax to the tune of about $36,000. It's my understanding, based on what I heard Mr. Weingard say, that the, what we refer to as the eminent domain mall project was largely his idea, and he certainly supports it. That's costing the taxpayers $845,000 in the upcoming budget. The casino complex also gets a permanent $440,000 tax abatement. Folks, just nice round numbers there. That's $2 million bucks. Now, there's other issues I have here, too. On your sales tax screen that you had up, $205,000 goes for economic development. There's some economists at Iowa State University that says, all this money we're spending for economic development gains us nothing. And if you look at this community, between the city, the county, the schools, we spend over $200 million since the mid-1990s on economic development. We haven't created one living wage job, not one. And we keep throwing more and more and more money at that. You know, the budget just isn't a spreadsheet. It's looking at what those numbers are being used for. We, we continue, as far as law enforcement, to fight the war on drugs. Now, I've got a question for all of you. I've got three drugs here. Adderall, Ritalin, and Desoxin. They're drugs to treat attention deficit disorder. Do you know what those drugs are? You're in the medical profession, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I know.
Tell, tell me what Desoxin is.
I don't think those drugs have anything to do with our budget that we're discussing today.
Yes, yes, it does.
Thank you.
We, we spend...
Because if we stay upon the numbers, you know...
In, in your budget, you...
Not within our budget does it talk about Ritalin or anything else. So, if we could stay upon those numbers, I would...
Okay.
I know what those numbers are, I mean, those, what those drugs are. And, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
Like I say, we've been fighting the war on drugs since I was 12 years old. It never ends. Even, even the Vietnam...
Are you saying, then, let's stop fighting the war on drugs?
You betcha.
Okay. I just wanted to hear you say that. So, thank you.
I think it's stupid. It's just another Vietnam. We've handed out incentives to the hotels and motels around town for their convention centers, their meeting centers. At the same time, we're losing $350,000 a year on the auditorium. That's stupid. We subsidized the casino complex, now we're losing money at the swimming pool. And $25,000, I don't, nothing was on the, online about this year's or the upcoming budget, so I had to use last year's numbers. That's $25,000 down the drain. We have a transit service that doesn't go where people want to go, when they want to go, that costs the taxpayers $260,000 a year. We're spending $21,000 on the depot. That building should have been torn down a long time ago. I'm a rail fan, but that's, that's a financial sinkhole that needs to go bye-bye. The airport, I think we ought to join the Moline Airport Authority. If you want to fly, you drive to Moline. There's another $127,000. I've already talked about the Convention and Tourism Bureau. That's $325,000 down the drain. On employee benefits, you can't get a hold of your costs there. The city workers, as far as their health plan, their pension is multiples, two or three times what people in the private sector are getting. You need to get your costs under control. That, that's another $750,000 down the drain. Now, on economic development, I didn't have time to go through all this, and I didn't have time to review my notes from last year. But you questioned my numbers. On the 2002 series, C-series bond, there's $200,000 that's going to economic development. On 2004 series bond, $150,000 of that is dedicated to economic development. You've got the library note, which somebody, the former mayor claimed would create 1,000 jobs. There's $143,000. The 2005 series bond, $120,000. We talked about the TIF revenue bond for eminent domain mall. That's $845,000 down the drain. 2007 series bond, you got $60,000 for economic development. 2000, let me finish. You got the 2008 bond, $30,000 down the drink. You got the federal mogul loan, and I don't care whether it's withholding tax credits that pay for that, or where the tax giveaway is coming from. That's $287,000 down the drain. 2009 series bond, $87,000 gone. 2011 series bond, $12,000 gone. I talked about the permanent tax abatement that Randy Weingard got. That's $440,000 down the drain. We're building, going to redo the Cascade Bridge for the benefit of a handful of families so they can drive downtown where there's no longer a business district. That's ridiculous. You've got a, the Viaduct and Mount Pleasant Street is in worse shape, and you haven't even begun to talk about that. You're recycling. You're, you're jacking the fees on that. We really need to rethink that. We're paying four times as much to recycle material as it costs to dump it and hold in the ground. Somebody needs to get their costs under control. I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars where the people that are elected to represent me, not the Chamber of Commerce, or the public employees, that you guys are paid to represent me, you're not even looking at what this is doing to us. I agree with Stan. You know, my wife's pay increase was one-half of 1 percent. And you're talking a 5 percent increase. You're driving the people that pay your wages and the employees of the city. You're driving those people that pay your wages into bankruptcy. You're going to have to start looking at what you're doing with our money.
Can I just make one comment here, Counsel? Stan, I appreciate your input. Thank you. You make some good points, but it gets lost in some of your creative accounting there. It just baffles me where you come up with these numbers.
I just wanted to say for the record that Leon, I, when you said, when you gave all these numbers, everything you kept saying was this was money down the drain. And I just can't, I just can't agree with you on that. Now, on some things, and, and again, you had just saying, I'll leave it, I'll leave it lay, leave it lay. I'm just saying, how, how can you say that to keep the pool going is money down the drain? It wouldn't be if you had a, if you were poor and you had kids, and that was the only outlet they had during the summer. If that pool was open, that wouldn't be money down the drain. I think we have to just look at the bigger picture, just like you said. I don't think it's money down the drain.
Well, I'd like to address that. When we funded Randy's complex there, he never lived up to the agreement as far as the rate people would pay to get in the door to use that facility.
I, I don't know about that.
Well, that, again...
Speaking of the pool...
I, I know about Dankworth Park, but the deal was, everybody knew that was going to imperil the Dankworth Park. But there was an agreement made with Randy as far as the fees to get into his facility to cover that eventuality, and that didn't come to fruition.
Okay, thank you, Leon. Anyone else have comment from the audience?
Eric French, 30907 High Street. Just a couple of things, and I, I tend to agree in principle, in theory, with the, with the previous speakers. The 11 percent increase in, in the budget in a year where most people are seeing a decrease in their, in their income is, is a challenge. But the real challenge to me, when I look at what's going on with counsel, is deciding what it is that the guiding principles are that are driving your decisions. What I haven't figured out is whether or not, when I look at your 20 primary focus areas and what it is you're trying to accomplish, I have a hard time figuring out whether it is you're trying to keep taxes under control, whether you're trying to build up the surpluses, whether you're trying to get the city in balance, whether you're trying to provide services. I can't figure out from your budget and the things that you've done with it, where your priorities truly are. And so, you know, in order for people like me in the citizenry to understand and support the budget that you're putting forward, we really need to know what it is that you're trying to accomplish. And it's very difficult, looking at this budget and the things that, that you've done, to determine what it is exactly that this council's trying to accomplish with its budget. So, what I encourage you to do is to take a look at your priorities and, and really establish goals for those. And communicate with the citizens what it is that you're trying to accomplish, because you leave us confused. In, in one breath, we talk about needing to get our budget under control. In the next breath, we talk about a, a tax increase. I've heard from this council many times that there's not been a tax increase since you've sat on city council. And then we look tonight, and there's, there's a number of instances on that. And even within that, there are years where the rollback has changed, and taxes have gone up, even though this council has taken no action to the contrary. Now, you look at the recent city school board, because of the rollback, they're actually cutting the millage rates. So, you know, trying to keep those things in balance, it's really about trying to figure out what it is that you all are trying to accomplish, so we can figure out whether or not we're in favor of that or opposed to it. Because right now, it appears to me that it's all over the board. Now, on a, a couple of other real quick issues. One is...
Could I address what you just said, though? Because I'm new on the council. And I came on the council, you know, really looking at that budget. And, and, you know, Shane and I are both new on here, but I will have to say, I feel that this council really scrutinized this budget, but unfortunately, a lot of this budget was set, you know, like by the end of the year, and as far as, you know, you find out when you get on here, what can you and can't you do in just a short period of time. I think that we all have this attitude here that we want to see big changes made, but we know that we can't do that in two months.
I, I, I understand, and I agree with you. And even within that, for you, is the challenge of figuring out what to do, because there isn't guiding principles in place that tell you what it is you're really trying to accomplish. Or at least, I don't see them.
Well, I disagree, and I think that we've had a lot of good discussion. I think we do know, you know, that we need to build our reserves. We are very happy with what we, who we're bringing on as city manager. I think we've all had discussions, and we really feel strongly about addressing these things. And, and, but what can you do in a short period of time when, when the budget is given to you? And how much can you change? So many things are set almost a year ahead, so you really have to start working on a budget a year ahead. And we know that, you know, and we, I think everybody here has really scrutinized this budget. We really wish we could do other things, but we, but the time period has just...
I, I understand that. I'm not a huge fan of pointing to previous administration and saying, well, it's their fault. And I, and that's really not the issue. It's really about communicating to the people... It's really about communicating to the people what it is that you're trying to accomplish. And I'm telling you, I live in town, and I'm just not hearing it. You guys may have discussions, and you may have had great discussions. What I'm saying to you is that, is that I don't know as a citizen what it is you're trying to accomplish, and I can tell you that I come to more of these meetings than anybody else does. And if I'm not getting it, odds are most of the other people in town aren't either. So I'm trying to get an understanding of what it is that this council's trying to accomplish in terms of the, of the financial state of the city. And, and it's very difficult to, to be excited and, and happy that we're, that we're bringing our reserves into line when the rollback is rolled back and the taxes are, are going up, and there's an 11 percent increase in spending, and all of us are not seeing an 11 percent increase in spending. So if I don't know exactly what it is you're trying to do, I find it very difficult to support the budget that you're putting forward.
Thank you, Eric.
Now, moving on to my, my next point is in regard to the $560,000 for the trail system. If there's anything in the budget that I would say is a waste of money, it's the trail system. One is that the trail system's not a truly a trail system. It's not like they're outbuilding a, a trail that, that people are out marching on every day. You know, I, I just don't see that as being a dollar's well-spent in a tight fiscal time.
Could we address that issue?
Sure.
Eric, could you comment on that? How, how much of that money it actually is?
Okay. Of the 560,000 that we have budgeted, 504,000 is gonna come from grants. So the city's portion is 56,000. That'll, has already been bonded for.
And I understand that, but as I've, as I've stated to this council on numerous occasions, we have to quit participating in programs that cost us money just because we think we're getting money from the state and federal government. Because guess what? We're paying that also.
Agreed.
Okay? Now, my last point is in regard to the Chamber of Commerce. And the, just as an example, the dollars that come out of hotel motel that go to the chamber. I don't know if you saw in the paper recently that there was a court case in Iowa City for an entity that received tax dollars and their obligation to report their budget to the citizens as a tax-receiving entity. And that's in the courts right now. And I, you know, I, I've called the chamber and asked for a budget on what they're spending. And the biggest reason I think that people like Leon get upset about what the chamber's doing is that we don't know. Those dollars, we know how much we're giving them. We have no idea what they're spending it on, and they won't tell us. Now.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau gives us a, a budget.
Detailed.
Every month, we get a budget from them.
Now, I have not, I don't get that.
Of course not.
I've asked for it. It's my tax dollars that are going to the chamber. And, and I would like to know what those dollars are being spent on.
Technically, it's hotel motel tax dollars.
What, the assumption there is that, is that all, I pay hotel motel tax when I travel as well. Those are the taxpayers' tax dollars that are going into the chamber.
But anyway, the Convention and Visitors Bureau publishes a budget report, expense and income, every month, and we get it when, I used to go to Convention and Visitors Bureau. I think Shane.
Is that something that's available to the citizens?
Absolutely. Anytime you want to look at it, you're welcome to see.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
But the other parts.
I think they do have a website, and every once in a while, they put it within their, their magazine that they put out, too.
But other parts of the chamber aren't required to publish those because they don't receive tax dollars.
Okay. Well, I apologize if I have misspoken. I have not seen it. I've asked for it, and I have, I just haven't seen it anywhere.
Okay.
So I'm glad that you guys have it, because I think that that's important. But really, what I think I hear from Leon and these other gentlemen is that, is that we want to have confidence that those tax dollars are being spent well. Right now, we're just not seeing it, at least for me personally. And I, and I've looked, and maybe I'm just not good at looking, but I haven't seen those, those dollars.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else in the audience have comments you'd like to make about the budget?
Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th Street. I'm encouraged to see that you've left $750,000 for the SILCO program in Iowa, in the five-year print plan that that's, that's going to continue, and that before that program is completed, that there is a written plan that has the council's endorsement on what's going to take place after that. What the maintenance program's going to be, how many dollars are going to be needed for that, and that becomes a part of that budget. It's, it's critical.
I agree.
The, and I'm also thrilled that you're putting $50,000 in for the demolition program. That's very much needed. And, and stay on top of that. I would mention that I have a couple of properties in particular that I'm interested in, and they're both burned out. One's next to the old Mayfair store, and the other one's on LeWise, I think the 1600 block. They've been there for a couple of years now, three, four years.
Yeah.
Something needs to be done with them. The, the, my, my only disappointment is that we're, that, that you're looking at this as no increase, and, and even though the levy's not increasing, like Erica said, it is a, it is a tax increase, and let's call it what it is.
Yeah, it is an increase. Yeah. We're, we're, that's what we're saying, it's an increase.
Okay. And, and I appreciate that. I think the honest, honesty's the best approach, and not trying to cover up.
In fact, the slide said on our $100,000 house, it's roughly $35 increase.
All right. I, I was getting text messages from a former mayor while I was sitting back there. That's why I kept, kept smiling back there. Mike Edwards had several comments. I wish he was here to share them with everybody.
I thought you were saying about Bill L. You guys were texting back and forth.
Well, that, that was probably coming, so, and I'm sure that Jeff Healan's was, that, now that Jeff Healan knows, I'll probably be getting some from him, too. But I, again, I appreciate those, those two objects. I know you're up, up against a tough one, as always, and I'm encouraged about the next conversation we're gonna have on Cascade Bridge, too.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
No, Tim, I do agree with you that we need to, when that SILCO project and program runs out, we need to have a maintenance program. I'm sure Mr. Kenoke's putting that together right now.
Anybody else from the audience?
Bill L., 218 Grattan. I vowed not to speak when I came here tonight, but I know how much you people enjoy being here, so I thought I'd make a couple of quick comments, anyway. First, I think I need to defend myself and respond to Leon's questions about the 1,000 jobs. If I'm not mistaken, I think that was a jobs withholding thing. I, I don't know what the numbers are now, but I know that there's been a number of jobs added to, to that factory. And they're still being held by the state and by the city, I assume, to maintain that level of 1,000 at some point. So, and because it's jobs withholding tax, it's really not cities' dollars. So I think it's important to point that out. Secondly, I would, I would comment that when I was with the city council, and I went through the MLA, I went through the Municipal Leaders Academy, they told me had two jobs. One was to provide infrastructure, which is really pretty clear. I mean, you know, you know what that is. It's tangible. You can put your fingers on that. Secondly, it was quality of life. And quality of life is not something you can really put your fingers on. Consequently, some of those things that fall in that category are things like the Recplex, the auditorium, things like that, that you're going, going to have to probably subsidize, subsidize to some extent. That doesn't do the taxpayer a whole lot of good, but it does indirectly, because of what you said, like the economic impact that it may have on the community. I'm speaking to the choir, I know I am. I think I'm speaking to the people behind me more than you, but, but I think that's important to understand what, that you do have to provide some quality of life. The pool issue, for example, Dankwart Park pool, is a quality of life issue. Can you afford it? Maybe not, but you may have to end up doing that. Sounds like that's probably what you're gonna do. So, so you are confronted with those kinds of things. One of the comments that I had in my mind all the time while I was here was that I was compelled to look at the big picture, as Chris or someone pointed out. And, and to do that, you, you're looking at the greatest good. What's best for the most, you know, right? Well, seldom is that ever consistent with what about me? So when the guy comes to you and says, what about me? You know, it's, it's hard to respond to. But you're in a trap, you're in that trap that you'll always be in as long as you're, delegated to provide those two responsibilities. So that's my class for today. I, too, am happy that you got the demolition program back in the budget. And I am not thrilled by tax increases, but I do know that in order to maintain our fund balances, to provide enough cash reserves, and to maintain our, our financial rating for the city, that what you're doing is, is probably, I don't know that you're done doing that, but.
No, we're not.
It may, yeah, yeah. But it may go on. But thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak concerning the budget? Hey, counsel, do you have any comments?
I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir.
As far as I'm concerned, the budget tells us that's the maximum amount of money we can spend. I think we're all pretty excited about a new city manager coming in here, and I think one of the challenges we'll present to him early on is can we find ways to not spend all this money? Are there ways through process improvement or what have you where we don't have to spend what we're locked into?
Good.
The personnel issue, I just got it here, and that is $18,314,000 just for personnel costs. Now, I don't know if we can do anything with that or not, but I'm just saying, that's a major issue that's got to be looked at. And there are other issues. I just singled that one out, because it's the largest single increment. But I think the city manager, with our support, it might surprise people by the end of the year, and maybe we won't spend every dime sent this budget.
Good.
No, Bob, I.
We don't guarantee that, however.
I agree with you 100 percent. I, you know, I'm looking forward to April 23rd, when James Frenow gets on board and he starts getting his feet wet, and, you know, that's one of the big items for, that I wanted to push with him, was our personnel costs and where we stand. You know, but I also want to preference that when we first started putting together this budget, we had bonding for Cascade Bridge, and we had bonding for the animal shelter. And if we would have bond, went ahead and bonded for those two things, the property tax levy increase would have been upwards of greater than 21 cents or above. And so we, we chose as a council, where do we automatically cut? Do we look at Cascade Bridge and, for this year, and, you know, not bond for it because of not knowing some of the information that, you know, that we're gonna talk about next, too, is, you know, with, with SHPO and the studies that they wanted done in, in the timeframe. If we would have bonded for it, who's saying that it would have been a year or plus, we would have been paying an interest on it and no construction being done? So, and then with the animal shelter, too. You know, we have to look at what does the final number come in with the animal shelter before we move forward? So my thing is, I think, you know, Burlington offers a lot of amenities to everybody, you know? If I go on Leon's list, and he went down, he listed 13 things that we should potentially get rid of in Burlington. You know, anywhere from the library to the Recplex, to the airport, to, you know, the depot, to the Cascade Bridge. You know, if we started getting rid of everything, not paying for everything, where would Burlington be? Would people want to move into Burlington, or would they want to move out? If we did what some people want by not paying for things, not supporting things, people would move away. I want to make it Burlington where a place where people want to move here. And I think we have a city manager that'll be coming on board in April, that he's excited, we're excited, everybody's excited to bring him on, because he is going to do wonders for Burlington with our support and everybody's support.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments, counsel? I just wanted to, personally, I want to thank Stephanie for her work. I know it's been tough for her, and I appreciate the, the presentation. I thought it was well done. I do want to comment about the sales tax fund. This is really, really, really crucial. $4.1 million, and it expires at the end of December. So on August 7th, when we have this special election, I'm, I'm asking you folks to get out there and support it, so that we don't end up in the next year's budget, actually in the half year's budget, beginning January 1, trying to find $4.1 million from who knows where. Well, you know where. Out of property taxes, or, as Chris has said, cutting a lot of things, so. That's my little plug for sales tax. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to close, Your Honor.
Do you have a second? Okay. Kathleen.
McCambe.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving fiscal year budget 2012, 2013.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion, counsel? Kathleen.
McCambe.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's carried. Thank you for your participation, audience. I appreciate that very much.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving Cascade Bridge Amendment to Engineering Service Agreement.
Okay. We need some explanation on that one.
We need a second.
Oh, thank you, Kathleen. Is that back to Mr. Kenoke?
Depends what the question is.
Pardon me?
Yeah, what's the questions, or what?
Okay. Just explain. Can you just explain what this agreement means and what?
I can try. I can tell you, and I can try to tell you why we're doing it now, I guess. We submitted this item for the council's consideration because we wanted to get the project moving again, and we were kind of under the understanding that, based on a few comments from the council, that the council was wondering why the project had stalled out. If that's not true, then we've misread something, but that was our feeling. And for whatever reason, it took Klinger and Associates a third attempt before they got one subconsultant to give them a proposal to complete the evaluation that is being required by SHPO, FHWA, and the DOT. And what they're saying is we did not evaluate the rehab option to the same extent that we made the evaluation and the determination on the new bridge. And I'm not disagreeing with that. That's just the way it is. So we've got to go through the process of evaluating the existing bridge for rehabilitation. The one proposal that Klinger got from a sub, a subconsultant, we felt was excessive, so we went back to Klinger and we said, okay, give us a proposal for you to do it. And, and the reason that we were, we didn't ask them in the first place was not because the DOT wouldn't let us do it. In fact, we have a, records of a conversation we had with our DOT representative on this project, Libby Walinga, from October, where she said that we could use, we, Klinger is, as the consultant on this. What we were trying to do, because we hired them basically, the council hired them basically to design a new bridge, we felt there's a possibility that there would be, it would be looked at as a conflict. With the costs getting the way they were, we went back to them. We asked them for a proposal. They came in, they made a proposal at about, right around $41,000. Our feeling right now is we have two proposals, we have proposals from two DOT pre-qualified firms, and the proposal from Klinger and Associates is the least cost, costly to the So that's why we, we came to you with the, the amendment to the agreement with Klinger. Is that what you wanted?
That's what I wanted. Thank you very much. And maybe also, exactly what is it that needs to be done? I mean, how, help me understand the process. What exactly is it they're going to do to decide, help decide if this is gonna be repairable, or?
They need, what they need to do is a detailed cost estimate about what they have to do, what we would have to do to, number one, make the bridge safe for traffic, and then also look at the ongoing maintenance costs. If, if the initial cost, say, comes in the same as a new bridge, but the maintenance costs are 10 times as much every year for the next 25 or 50 years, then it's not really the next twenty-five or fifty years, then it's not really comparable, so they need to do an evaluation, and, and I, and it's the, the, the nuts and bolts and details of what they have to do, I probably don't know.
Okay. But that, that satisfies me. That's what I want to, yeah. Okay. Any other?
I, I have a comment, I guess. Um, I'm not in favor of hiring Klinger. I guess, uh, to me, you know, I, being familiar with some SHPO things that I, I just, I'm surprised that, and, and I know it's all in the past now, that we did not do that before we paid for plans for a new bridge, and, and there's nothing we can do about that now, but, um, and even in the emails that I've read here, um, I think they're telling us, um, that it would probably be better not to go along with Klinger, and I, my fear is that SHPO will not view that as being, uh, not a, you know, not a conflict of interest, and will ask us for then another engineer, and they have given us names. I don't know why we can't go to these others and ask them for a price we don't know, you know, and they're all here in Iowa, I believe, too. I don't know why we went to Missouri. Um, I mean, the whole thing, I guess I'm just against, um, and I know there was another, um, name brought up. I don't know if it's on this list, but I know that we, we have to go with, I think, who, this list that SHPO gives us, they, right? The engineering firm has to be listed by, um, the, the DOT or the, his, or the...
It's a, it's a DOT pre-qualified list for steel bridge design.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a SHPO. It's a DOT thing.
Okay, but, but this list, these other three names that were suggested, we never did send out any material to them and ask them? We didn't ever sub, ask them for an RFP? These, the three listed on this email, I guess, that I'm looking at?
We did not, because if you go back to what I said earlier, we asked Klinger and Associates to hire a subconsultant to do the thing. It wasn't the city hiring it, it was them hiring it, so we didn't pick who they went to, and because we felt if they, if, if we forced them, or if we took proposals from people, and it was somebody that they couldn't work with or weren't familiar with, that was, that was going to be counterproductive also. So, we let them try to find the subconsultant, and when they found one that was willing to do it, uh, it, it was just very excessive.
And, and I guess I don't feel that we should be giving that to Klinger. I think we should be finding that, because I think if we go through Klinger, it's going to look like, um, a conflict of interest, or, or it's going to, there's still, there will still be doubt there in SHPO's mind that we have not satisfied, and that they could, and they could come again and ask for another study. I, I guess I would prefer that we, as the city, went out and got these other RFPs.
It's just the insurance of knowing that, uh, four or six months down the road, that SHPO or the DOT will come back and say, we're unhappy with your study that Klinger did, we need you to do another one. That's where, that's my taking it. I just want the insurance that whoever we use, they are one hundred percent in agreement that we will use this company and, or this, um, firm, and they won't ask for more detailed evaluations later that will cost the city more money.
You aren't, you are not going to get that guarantee, and if you look at the email, the last email that Libby sent us, her three, the three forms that her recommendation, she actually makes the recommendation to SHPO. It does not go, we don't go to SHPO. We go to the DOT. The DOT makes the recommendation to SHPO. Those, the three forms, one or two or three of which her recommendation may take, were not specific to Klinger. They were for any consultant we pick. Any consultant we do, they have the right to say they didn't do enough work. Now, and I'm not, I'm not, uh, advocating for Klinger. We hired them to do, we do this. I'm, I'm trying to, I, what, what we're recommending is the most reasonable cost at this point that we've come up with. Now, I don't have any problem with, uh, there's thirty-six on this pre-qualified list. There are thirty-six engineering firms. Sixteen of them are in Iowa. I don't, I don't have a problem with we send a proposal to all sixteen of them, or go outside of Iowa. If we send a proposal to the three that, that she picked off of this list and gave us, if that's the only place we send them, and all three of them come in at seventy thousand or eighty thousand dollars, then what do we do?
Well, I, I think that always happens when you put out something like that. You don't know what the price, but, I mean, I just look at this one sentence here. It said it would behoove the city to submit an RFP to a few of these other pre-qualified firms. I think she's saying that to us as a warning to me, and I, and I felt that anyway, so...
Definitely is advice.
Can we, can I open this? On, is anyone in the audience has any comments or questions about this issue? Is that okay?
My name is Linda Clark, and I live at nine twelve North Seventh Street, and with your permission, I'd like to hand out, um, some materials so that you can just follow along with me, and I have some written remarks so that I'll keep it really short. May I pass some things out?
Certainly.
I am the head of the public streets here tonight. You were at the paper just the other day.
What, what you'll have in front of you is just a chronological rundown of, of why I got involved.
Yeah, just bend that down, and you don't have to, you don't have to try to lean into it. Just kind of bend it down just a little.
Okay.
There you go. Yeah, that's plenty. I think you can back off just a little.
Okay. Many of these articles you've already seen, but I have them in chronological order for you. Last September, my old friend John Benz visited here. A retired architect, John admires Burlington's historic buildings, its natural setting, and our preservation efforts. Due to the Imagine project, the closed Cascade Bridge was on people's minds, but it was not on any particular agenda. I was curious how John would view its condition, so we went over, under, and around the structure. He took many photos, and the recent Hawkeye articles which you have in front of you quote his delight with the bridge's design, its articulation, and its sensitivity to its beautiful surroundings. And then John said, I have an idea. Our firm has dealt over the years with an engineering firm that specializes in historic structures. Why don't I contact these guys, show them the photos, and see what they have to say? Now, how could I refuse an offer like that? CSA Associates, their letter proposal which you have in front of you, uh, I was so hopeful of getting the ball rolling that I, I offered to pay for their visits. I'm kind of sorry that became a, a part of the headline because that's not the important issue here. If it's not too late for Burlington to access the one million dollars from the federal government, I felt that presenting them with state-of-the-art technology could help. It might also satisfy the needs of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Cascade Bridge is on their registry thanks to the care and the efforts of earlier Burlington citizens. In October, I attempted to share this information with city council members and key preservationists, and there were no follow-ups. Uh, we were in the business of having a new election and got lost in the fray. On January twenty-ninth this year, it was a Sunday, and it was my birthday, I awoke to a wonderful birthday present. The Hawkeye editorial entitled Which Direction, which you can see in front of you, was about this neglected issue, and I thought, ah, maybe something will happen. Then, impossibly to my mind, last Monday's headline was about the issue of the Cascade Bridge being postponed again, and I thought to myself, great, now the Cascade Bridge can further deteriorate and reinforce the notion that it should be torn down. Burlington is presently awash in concrete viaducts and bridges. They are solid, they are serviceable, and they are uninteresting. The Eiffel Tower and the Brooklyn Bridge are also beautifully articulated metal structures of the same vintage as our Cascade Bridge, and I don't think the Parisians or the New Yorkers will have them replaced with concrete substitutes anytime soon. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak?
I'm Ben Garick. I'm Dinoy Smith, and, and I happen to be the, another one thousand dollar person that was in the paper, and I really didn't want my name out there, but I offered, when I heard, saw Linda's thing in this paper, I thought, well, I can offer some money if we need some money to, to hire a firm to make this decision, so that's all I wanted to say, is I'm willing to give a thousand dollars for that effort, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, too, Linda.
Yes. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Me.
Tim?
I want to speak.
Okay, I got you.
Tim's giving a thousand bucks.
Tim Scott, twenty seventeen, pardon me.
Two thousand, three?
What?
I said, Tim's giving a thousand bucks, too.
He's really laughing.
He did a good laugh.
Tim Scott, twenty seventeen, South Fifteenth Street. Um, yeah, what Ms. Clark and the others are doing are admirable. Um, my concern is that, uh, the type of bridge that it is, I, I'm not a huge preservationist, but I know there's, there's, there's things that need to be saved, but Cascade Bridge is part of our infrastructure. If you're designed, to design a bridge like that today, there wouldn't be a lot to be built. There's no redundancies in it. Um, I, I'm, I'm afraid that, uh, when, uh, when the decision was made in the sixties or whatever it was to take the wooden deck off of there, that we ruined the, the bridge anyway. We've done a poor job of maintaining it. We didn't have the money to maintain it, and, and that's, that's a sad thing, or sad excuse, one or the other. Um, but there, there comes decision times, and there comes times when, when, when we have to take care of our infrastructure, and time delays or, or, or money badly spent. Um, I, I'm, I, this isn't going to be a popular project, no matter what you do, and, and, and having, uh, the side of preservation versus, um, uh, maintaining infrastructure, having those two different, uh, sides are, are going to pull it even further apart. Um, I'm very much for having, uh, that bridge there. I think it's a, it's a part of the city's infrastructure, and it gets people from point A to point B, and it's more than just the people that live on the other side of the bridge. It's all the kids that ever played, uh, baseball at the Little League, or ever went to the swimming pool, or ever went to, uh, uh, the Baptist Church, or ever went to Lake Starker or anywhere else in the, in the park. I mean, it's, it carries a lot more vehicles than, than the half a dozen vehicles that go to the homes, uh, every year. I, I think we need to look for the, for the importance of the infrastructure in, in, in this particular case, and, and the less of wasting a lot of time and money on, uh, on something that can't even be built today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else from the audience wishing to comment?
Sorry, Stan. Um, just a, just a quick comment. I saw in the paper that the last repairs were done on this bridge in nineteen ninety-eight, and it's a long time to go without doing any repairs, and I guess one of the things I've advocated for a long time is that, is that instead of trying to bite off a four million dollar or five million dollar project to get this bridge replaced, why can't we begin the process of repairing parts of this bridge, and as we repair it gradually over time, its functionality will be restored, and the, and the bridge will gain function as we invest in small pieces over the years to get it back to a serviceable level? I'm not sure why it is that we think we need to bite off the whole thing and repair the whole thing in one shot, or replace the whole thing in one shot. Why can't we begin to allocate funds on an annual basis to slowly bring the bridge back into a state of repair and reuse?
But that's assuming it can be.
Yeah.
That's the question. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Stan Stratton, twenty-nine, Chairman of Drive. I oppose the new bridge. You've known that for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when this bridge was built in eighteen ninety-six, it said there in the paper, we didn't have trucks, buses, et cetera. Lot of weight there. It was never designed for that to begin with. We beat up on it for years and years and years, and it's cost us. It caught up with us. If we do have to pay for a new bridge, what leaves a bad taste in my mouth is the way we're doing it. I don't think five people on the council, even though you all said we were for the bridge, that the people didn't think they would have a vote on it. If the people really want the bridge, let the people say so. I'll never be here to complain again, but if you go around the back door and bond that money where we don't have a say, it's not right.
Thank you, Stan. Mr. L.
Okay, this is the last time I'm coming here.
Bill L., two eighteen Gratten.
Write that down.
If this is a general obligation bond, you're going to have to go to the voters for their approval, so Stan and whoever else will have an option for that. On the other hand, if you do an essential corporate, well, that's a different story, but, so I would advocate that you go with a GO bond. That way, people do have a say in this. Um, also wanted to comment on this whole situation where we're at right now. I think the question was originally, was what, what should, how should we move ahead? That was Ron's question. What do you want you to do? My recommendation would be, and I have a tendency to agree with what Becky said, I, I, I don't know if you legally can, can, uh, just accept one bid. Maybe you can under the circumstances, but ethically, probably, the wisest thing to do is send it to all sixteen of those people and find out if you can repair the thing, and, and see what the cost would be. If it's, if, what, you get all this cost laying on the table, uh, and compare it to the forty-one thousand or whatever, and then you go from there, but you can't leave Ron in a trap either, so.
Exactly.
I think that's, that'd be my recommendation.
All right, thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
No, I, I just want to make a comment about, um, I kind of hope it goes to the voters, too. I, I would like to see it go to the voters.
Bob, you had a something to say?
Yeah, I think my concern is, I thought as a council, we agreed some time ago we were going to build a new bridge. I mean, uh, and the only thing that's brought all this bruhah about, about can we repair it or not, is we're trying to get the million dollars from the federal government, so SHPO comes in and says, well, by golly, you better look into the historical side of it, and that's fine. Uh, the people that are accusing Klinger of maybe having a bias, I don't know what their basis is. I find it very unfair, but they have a right to that, I guess. To me, this, the answer is pretty obvious and simple. All right, if, if we don't want to use them because of perceived bias, go ahead to the other twenty-six, or go to this one outfit we already got a bid from, Majeski Masters, for eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. I mean, I'll, I'll bet you, go to all sixteen, I'll bet you you're going to get studies back anywhere from sixty to eighty-five thousand dollars, and if that's what we want, that's fine, but then we can move ahead, send it into DOT, and let them look at it. They forward it on to SHPO, and, and move on. I mean, that's how I see it, anyway.
Thank you.
And I want to clarify, when you, I don't know, you may be talking about the former council. I am for opening the bridge back up, but I want, I do want to know if that bridge can be saved. I'm not saying I'm for a new bridge. I want the bridge open, and, and I think that's what I've always said. I want the bridge, I want a bridge there. I want to know. I just want to know if, if it can be saved.
Oh, let me make one more comment on that, and this is kind of a rah-rah bitch, but don't we have any confidence in our city engineers?
Good point.
I mean, uh, I'm not saying they're world-class experts, but we have people that went out and studied that bridge to see if it could be repaired or not, and we were given good advice. It is not. Now, it, I'm sure we can dig around and find someone that'll come in maybe and come up with some magic deal that says it can, but my point being, uh, it wasn't the five of us sitting here saying, by golly, we can't repair it. Let's go ahead and build a new.
Yeah, you're right.
We had a, we had a train engineer evaluate that bridge very thoroughly and came back with a recommendation, and in fact, he was so concerned about it.
He shut it down for...
That he shut it down. Then they even shut it down for pedestrian traffic.
Mm-hmm.
End of speech.
Well, that's a good point, Bob. My, my question is here, folks, if we want to get more bids, then the, the proper thing to do probably would be to vote this down and then instruct Public Works to go after some more requests and get, if that's what you want to do, or another option, I guess, would be to continue this discussion to another time, uh, but we still have the issue of, of the, this particular bid.
Right.
So, it's, uh, and what do you, what do you suggest?
I would like to see us go after more bids and just see where it's at, because...
Well, then, then we, Ron, we'd be okay if we say no to this particular time for this bid, and, but we could come back to it later, I guess, is what my question would be.
To my knowledge, they did not put a time limit on this, and I think reasonably, i- if several months go by, they might want to adjust it for that.
Right, I understand. So, I, it seems to me that that might be the best way to go. If you're interested in getting other, other, uh, requests for proposals out, and then I, the way to go would be to vote this down and then come back with something, instruct Public Works to come back with something else.
Yep.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure they're going to understand that, and if we do that, we're looking at a couple of months.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we've pretty much said we can't do the bridge right now, exactly right now, anyway, so.
I was going to bring up, is that no matter how much we own to the bridge, we still have to come up with.
The bottom line is, if, if we want to do something with the bridge, we have to do this study.
Right.
We can't, we can't not do it.
If we want the million dollars.
Yeah, if we want the million dollars, exactly.
That's the catch.
Yep. And we do have a time limit on that, too. Okay. Okay, council, we have a motion and a second before us, and we've had time for public to speak, so...
Yes.
Let's move forward here. The motion is to approve the engineering agreement with Klinger and Associates, and so the question, ready, Kathleen?
Campbell?
Aye.
Reed?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
No.
All right, the motion fails. All right, so what we want to say, what we want to say, Ron, is to, to go ask for more bids, more bids, I guess, bottom line. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, and if we're going to, if we're going to send this out, it doesn't cost much more to send it to every, everyone on this list in Iowa than it does, than it does the three that, that have been previously named.
I'd just send it to everybody in Iowa.
Exactly, okay.
And one other question, is this firm on the list that Linda brought, the CSA Associates?
No, they're not, but I, but I don't think, if, if, if I'm reading the, the Hawkeye correctly, what they were going to do is look at it and then make a recommendation of an engineer to do the study. Is that correct?
Because they think it should be forensic engineering, which is laser technology, that is the newest state of the art, limited information, letting the bridge lie out. And so, they would...
We can't, the audience at home really can't hear what you're saying, if you're going to make some comment.
Yes, Ron has assessed it perfectly. I don't believe the CSA has the forensic technology, which is laser, and that would look into the structure of the bridge, and I think that would be most likely to satisfy the federal IDOT and then the historic preservation. So, they would come out, I'd be happy to pay for that. They would look it over and sort out who they think is the most technologically capable.
All right, thank you. All right, we had one item removed from the consent agenda, so I need a motion for resolution approving application that Iowa Department of Natural Resources to seek land and water conservation fund financial assistance for Perkins Park Shelter project. Could I have a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
No, I have your second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Renneria, you asked for that to be removed, is there a reason?
Yeah, actually. Eric Renneria, 907 High Street. I wanted to understand exactly what that project was, as I had not heard of it before. And I wanted to reiterate to the council that this is a project that costs the city money, even though the state's paying part of it. Again, we pay that money. I, I just want to emphasize that I think that these types of programs are bad for, for the citizens of the United States, and we ought to be working to try to get rid of these programs at the state level, and stop them from taking our tax dollars to begin with, as opposed to participating in it and being a part of the problem.
But we can't, you know, allow them to do that.
I, I understand that, but the message has to come from local communities, and we have to take control of our government at the local level to drive things at the state level, and if that's not the message that we're sending, then I, just for me personally, I feel like we're sending the wrong message to them.
I think you're talking to the wrong group. I think you need to be talking to state legislator, federal government. Anyway, Eric, do you want to comment on, on exactly what's happening here?
Yeah, this is Open Air Shelter House, just west of the restrooms there in Perkins Park, to the south of the large shelter building. Existing one that was removed last year, exceeded its useful life, so they're looking to replace it with a new one this year.
And the funding source is?
The Starker Trust is funding it. We're applying for the grant so we can reduce the Starker Trust amount to it, but there's no cost for the city on that.
Okay.
So, there's no state or federal funds in this? This is just from the Starker Trust?
It's, it's fully funded by the Starker, but we're applying for the grant to reduce that Starker amount to use it elsewhere, so...
Okay, any other questions? Anyone else from the audience concerned this issue? All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the, it's really just an application at this point. There's nothing saying that we're actually going to get the money, right? Okay.
Campbell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
At this point, we have time for comments from the audience. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to make a comment about something that has not been discussed already?
Council, Tim Scott, 2017, South 15th Street. I'm really pumped up, and, and I'm going to tell you why. I talked a little bit to Shane about this, and I think he might have passed some of it on to you, but, you know, Greenway's being refurbished, rehabbed, and if you haven't been out there, you need to take a trip through there so that you can see the old property and what the new looks like. They started putting the siding on, it's a, it's a rock siding. I don't know why I'm so pumped up about this, other than the fact that I'm working out there and, and watching it come together, and, and it's going to be a very, very attractive property. But I also wanted to mention the, the great job that the Pearson family's doing on the, on the southwest, what's called the southwest sub area, that all of that property along Roosevelt between Mason Road and West Avenue Road is filled now. There's a mini mall going in there, as well as a Hardee's, that's going to finish out all of, all of those lots. I don't know if you noticed or not, but there was a sign up next to the Holiday Inn Express, there's a mini mall of sorts going in there as well. You know, we, we talk about all this empty property sitting around, but I've, I've gotten two calls this week, that means today, two calls from businesses that are wanting bids on doing rehabs or looking for, one was rehab, one was looking for property. And both of them because they're being displaced because of another very nice project, which I know everybody knows about, and that's, that's the Laguard Company project, the Fairway Center. I heard, heard from someone from Case Company yesterday that they had a fairly successful job fair this weekend. They're looking to put 300 people on this year. And there's also, I don't know if you know about the rehab of one of the buildings out there, but it was huge, and it put a lot of local contractors to work, and, and there's more of that in the future that, that I've been told, and to be prepared for it, is what I was told. And we're talking about not, about the economic development earlier, not providing incentives for jobs, but five years ago, my son was hired at Dresser-Rand, and he's now 70th on the union hierarchy, or whatever they call that, the seniority list.
Seniority list.
They've hired 70 or 69 since he's started working there, so, and it's, and they just, I just saw in the paper they're advertising for some more help, so I think that's great. I don't know if you've seen, paid attention to Borgian Cobo, but there's no place left for their employees to park. They're parking out in the streets, and, and their, their business is, is growing as well. And I sure hope that that fertilizer plant comes along and, and gets developed, and there's 175 jobs there, 2,000 construction jobs. I think we're, I, I think, I kind of envy you guys right now, because you're in a position where you're going to be on the council, and there's going to be some pretty tremendous growth.
I agree.
But I would just encourage you to be prepared for it.
I agree.
Take the credit for it, too.
Pardon me? Well, hell, yes!
I think it's, I think it's your beard. You can't shave your beard until...
Until it's all done. Okay, I, okay.
You've left him speechless twice.
Yes.
$1,000 in the beard.
Oh, I'll just stay here until you shut up.
Shut up.
But I, I, I just, I just see an awful lot, a lot of positive going on in the community. And, you know, downtown, with my office down here now, and the shop, I'm tripping over construction projects all the time, and I think it's great. And it's just, it's, it's going to make a tremendous difference in the downtown, and, and I know I've talked to a couple of people that's wanted to, to move downtown, they said I can't find any place, I mean, one that suits them, but they're, they said they just haven't had places to look at, so that's, that's a good...
Good thing.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
No, Tim, I agree with you when you said the, a lot of the lots and the storefronts are being, you know, you know, taken up, you know, with some, unfortunately, some business being displaced, but I look at that, if we could, you know, build more strip malls, you know, and then some storefronts be reused, that's going to help the manor project down the road.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. I agree with you, Tim. Lot of positive things happening in our community. Anyone else from the audience have comments? Council, any closing comments from you? How about the city manager? I do want to comment, ask you, home audience, if you wouldn't mind emailing me or the council, what you think about our camera system and our whole system tonight. We'd appreciate any comments. I know Rich back there would love to hear what you have to say.
Good job, Rich.
City council at Burlington tonight?
Yes, it's right on the website. Yeah, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.